See if we get the payments.
It is Monday, September twenty-second, and I will call the water board meeting to order. First item on the agenda is, uh... Do we need to do the minutes?
There are minutes from the, the most recent one. We didn't really do anything because we didn't have the forum, but Janet did do minutes and I put them in the packet. I didn't have it on the agenda, so it's up to you to want us to do next.
If we didn't have a forum, I don't think they're gonna bring them.
I don't, I don't even know that it's formal minutes if there's a forum. We have a record of what happened, so.
Alright, so the first item on the agenda is consideration of the collection of agency funds.
So...
This is the green, the green folder that...
The green folder that I had previously circulated with you that you may have forgot to bring, but I have one here. You can pass it around. So, I always have my paperwork. Um, we went out for RFP on a collection agency to assist us with past due water receivables. We had three respondents. Um, two were much in line with providing services um for our size municipality and had expertise in municipalities. Um, we had an evaluation criteria for experiencing qualifications of twenty-five percent, understanding municipal receivables, and approach to collection was twenty-five percent. References and past performance were twenty percent, technology and reporting fifteen, and then a fee proposal which uh consisted of fifteen percent of the evaluation criteria. So Josh and I reviewed the RFPs that we got back. Um, out of the three respondents, one was stood out, and that was Allied Account Services. Um, they've been in business for twenty-five years. They're a hundred percent domestic, so there's no offshoring of any uh of their efforts, either from Hall Center or Management. Um, then about twenty-five uh utility companies that they do collections for. Some are very similar um in size from municipality, uh maybe slightly larger, but uh in the New York Hudson Valley, Long Island area. Um, they had a good customer portal. They also had the uh lowest contingency fee of seventeen point, point five percent on primary. And then if we wish for them to pursue all of the legal standpoint, including um uh court action, they will handle that with a thirty-five percent contingency. Um, they did meet insurance and did provide a certificate of insurance. Um, Liberty Utilities, Freeport, New York, uh Municipal Light and Power. They also do uh National Grid and PSEG Long Island or Long Island Electric. And one other notable item for them as a respondent is that they are a woman-owned business. So, um, I did a rubric and based on my scoring, they were met everything to get a hundred percent score. Um, the others kind of uh Midwest Service Bureau and IC System. Uh, IC System was our secondary. They have a thirty-five percent uh on all payments realized as their fee proposal. Um, well, they're not women-owned. They are a hundred percent domestic as well. Uh, they scored an eighty-nine on the rubric. So uh, my recommendation would be that we contract with Allied Account Services to handle um past due receivables within the Water Department, and we can send them as many or as few accounts as we want. Uh, looks like uh Josh has submitted here that there's five to really, but seven in total. Um, that he does not have arranged payment plans on.
Not in the, lives in two estates?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think we just send all of those to collections. And then um, I think Josh, you've done an outstanding job getting this down and getting payment plans. And then anybody that um doesn't meet their payment plans in the future, we just automatically send that over to the Collections Bureau to handle in the future. Um, this would also mean that in future billings, it would be my recommendation that when an account hits the over sixty mark, we just automatically send that and try and get a recovery. And based on the interest in the contingency, we'll probably lose just a little bit at the over sixty mark, but we also gain a lot of Josh's time back to work on water system-specific tasks and not paperwork regarding billing. Questions?
So it's open on the, on the number of...
It's completely open. Yeah, you said...
Totally have to.
Yeah, so we can pick and choose, and I would say we just send the estates um right to them. I pretty much have all the paperwork ready to go and shut off, final shut-off notifications for everybody that's circled, ready to go. So I think I'm gonna try to do that first and see what happens with that. Um, maybe they come in and pay. Maybe they sign up for a payment plan. Leave that up to them. There's a few scenarios where it's not gonna be as easy as that. Um... So... Do you wanna proceed with just turning them off first, or do we want to see if the collection agent can get something back in thirty days before we proceed with that? I mean, I don't think it hurts to sign up with them, send them a few people, see how it goes. Um, at least the estates and maybe one other scenario at least, and then we can always send more to them down the road if things work out well. What is this, September? Why don't, uh, this, this is my thought.
Yes.
Well, I just, I, I feel as if in the past, Burr did not do any kind of disconnection or strength very often, but the times that he did do it, people generally, unless it was something that was a closeout, you know, people generally pay because they got that notice. So I really feel that I'd like to see what happens with these, um, what, five or four um for, for Josh to take that extra step and see what happens. And send the estates already. We know, we, you know, we don't, we're not getting anywhere with that, but, but um, but take that next step before we send that to the collections. And then um, I definitely agree with Matt's idea of when people are not paying, just automatically be sending them to collections. But I just, I gotta tell you, I've been sort of part of this process, and I think Josh has done a really dedicated, thorough, careful, and I think fair job, and I listened to him with the customers, and I think he's done a great job. And so I wanna let that play out, you know, and see how far he could take it. Um, and then we could go to the collections. That's just my perspective.
So, let me just look at... We can onboard this, that, we could onboard by the end of this week. Um, so if we looked at one... So that brings us to six. So if we were to send all of these to collections before, and I, this is, just hear me out here. If we were to send all of these to collections, the, the five plus the two estates for a total of seven this week, we're still within our frame that if you didn't get anything back or they didn't make any progress in the thirty days, that you could still shut off on the week of October twentieth. Yeah, so we already, I already signed off on thirty days. So basically, this notice I'm gonna put up, they have a week to get all of me and make arrangements. And I, I think we should definitely get that rolling. Get this set up. Let's do that. Maybe send one other one. I mean, they're still gonna have to pay even if you turn it off, so...
Right, that's right.
Then they can just deal with the agency. But I hate to see the seventeen percent or whatnot go to them when I've done most of the work. But I agree, having it set up and ready to go, at least send them the estates, and then moving forward, we can pick and choose who we wanna send, or if it just becomes a huge time commitment, non-stop, then like you said, we just send everybody that's one-twenty or whatever. It's not on the payment plan, just send them to them after the thirty-day notice.
What, yeah, and if they, if they stop their payments, you mean?
Or if they fall off their payment plan, just send them.
Not, not basically.
So, I mean, if you look at like account one ninety-two, the contingency would be two hundred and twelve dollars and thirty-six cents. So you'd still get a thousand and change. Probably a lot of that is covering, so basically we're spending our interest
Right.
on...
To get it collected.
Yep, to get it collected. So, okay. Um... Uh, it would be my recommendation to go with Allied Account Services um as our collection agency of record and to use them for the estates of future collection efforts.
Is there a second?
I second that motion.
Motion made by Matt and seconded by Jamie to uh award the contractor of Allied Account Services. Um, I see other discussions.
When did your time end with these people?
So it already ended, and I'm gonna be posting the, either tomorrow or the next day uh disconnection notices. And then I have a week to find the shut-offs, make sure they work. Um, and they have seven days to basically get in contact with me. And they've already had thirty days, plus I gave them an extra week when I went door-to-door and gave them notices. So they've done more than ample time. So...
Okay, so well, my only comment would be that we send the estates right away. Then at your discretion, follow up with any that are in the parameters we've been discussing with, that you're recommending. So...
Okay.
Um, all those in favor signify the same. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, so I will send a notice of award and notice of decline to the other two. I will get that done tomorrow. Um, and then Josh, you and I will get together with Allied Account Services and get them all onboarded. Um, and I'll help you with that a little bit since I've done it a lot, so we can make it fast, okay? Um, and then also if you need any help with your other effort, just let me.
Okay.
I'm happy to uh come ride around with you or drive around and do things if you need me to do stuff.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, uh, there is an executive session.
I'll make a motion.
Legal, the legal matter.
I will make a motion uh that a premature discussion of a legal matter would cause the municipality and the Water Department to suffer substantial disadvantage.
Second.
Motion made by Matt and seconded by Jamie to uh establish the reason for the executive sessions for the water board. Um, the reason that... All those in favor signify the same.
Aye. And I'll make a motion to enter into an executive session for a matter of said legal matter uh and to allow uh Water Operator Josh Brace and Town Administrator Cynthia Browning to remain in the room.
Second.
Motion made by Matt and seconded by Jamie to enter into executive session for the legal matter and to allow Water Operator Josh Brace and Public Affairs Director Cynthia Browning to remain in the room. All those in, yes.
Go ahead, okay.
All those in favor signify the same.
Aye.
Uh, I just wanted to say for D-NAT, because I only just admitted them to the meeting. Um, we have a Water Department Executive um session, so we're gonna go in the other room and do that, and then we will come back and start the regular select board meeting. So we're still in the water meeting, so nothing's gonna be happening for a while unless um Brian and Willie choose to do a soft chew dance for you.
So you can just pause.
I have to pause it.
No, no, I think that pause.
Very boring.
All right, it is seven thirty-five, and we're back in session for the Water Board. Is there any other uh any other uh decisions or just starting to make?
Make a motion to adjourn. Second.
Motion made by Matt and seconded by Glenn to adjourn. The Water Board is adjourned. And we'll do this. Still seven thirty-five, and all the regular select board meetings are ordered.
And the agenda for the select board is the second page of the total agenda.
Got that. So the first item on the agenda, there's no additions or additions, correct?
Not that aware of.
Okay. Uh, the minutes of previous board meeting meetings, all those in the motion division.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of the September eighth select board meeting as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Matt and seconded by Glenn to present the previous meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, next section is for public comment. If there's anyone in the room or on the Zoom call that would like to comment on anything not already on the agenda, now's your time. I don't think there's anybody else leaving that on the call, right? Okay, so uh, public comments are done. We're moving on to the Highway Department. Paving pro, paving projects, right-of-way issues. So, take those in order, I guess.
Okay, so first of all, the paving project on Longwood Road, and things are late by a week. We close the start today, starting in twenty-nine. They had problems with that big equipment, the reclamation of grinder. So that's gonna start um next week as far as I know right now. Um, and we don't have any, I mean, Mark knows the parts of that whole project that he's gonna do, but I'm not knowing the flavers or anything. Peckham's doing all that, so I'm not, not having to worry about that. I, oh. Um, something is, a couple of things have come up with some projects. The covered bridge project, I don't know if um you guys remember, but we were trying to get with um that guy Joe Poston to see if he could do it, and he's still backed up. He was gonna have to schedule it next year. We had applied for a grant for it and initially didn't get it, but then was told, no, you are gonna get it because they, they have, you know, other people didn't take their grant or something like that. But then we never heard. I never got a grant agreement, and like, we don't have it till we sign something. So it turns out that the Historic Preservation Department is concerned that we need to have design specifications, not just the list of things from the inspection that need to be done, which is very, very clear in the RSP, but we need to specify the type of wood, the type of fastenings, and all the historic kinds of stuff. And they recommend that we hire an engineer or design firm, and they've given us a list to do that. I don't know how much it will cost. I'm kinda pissed because they, they didn't tell us. They like sat on this without, you know, I mean, I know they're overloaded and everything, but um I don't, I don't think our grant's gonna go up, and I don't know when this work can be done. But since this is what they're asking for, I probably need to do it, so I can contact the firms and find out what it might cost. Find out if anybody can do it. That's another thing.
Right.
Um, but if it's really just a question of the kind of wood and this fa- fasteners, can't we specify you have to use the same kind of wood that's there, and you have to use the same kind of fasteners that there? I mean, I'm just, yeah, and, and I, and I just particularly wanted to hear from Jamie on this, because I'm sort of like, this is excessive.
So we kinda went through a little bit of this with the, with the school, with the roofing, um, with the slate that was falling apart and leaking really bad. Um, and the Historic Preservation Plan, we said, no, you can put your asphalt on um as long as you don't change the facade and so on and so forth. Um, this is pretty much the same thing, because this bridge has been rebuilt in the past. The last time was after Irene. Um, it's got pressure-treated decking with oak over top of it. That's the biggest concern right there, is replacing that decking because it's rotting out.
Re- replacing the oak.
The pressure-treated decking.
The pressure-treated.
The pressure-treated decking is rotted on the bottom, where all the salt and, and everything drains down through it because they're on edge. Every inch and a half, there's a joint, and the water and the slush and everything has gone down through it. That is the biggest concern. I mean, that's what we're putting back in there, is the same style decking with the oak, oak overlay.
But we're putting in pressure-treated.
That's what's there now.
Right.
So to have specs done on something different, the rest of the bridge is basically being straightened up. What's there? It's, it's trim boards, um, painting. I mean, we put a metal roof on it thirty years ago. Um, so it's not like...
It's not pristine. You know, it's not pristine.
It's been reworked already, and that's, that was the same thing that they, they came to a conclusion with at school, excuse me.
It sounds like it's a conversation with the historic.
Right, and I did get, I did get those, those people's names from Patrick Wilson, and so I'm gonna proceed to contact them, but, but I wanted to talk to you first, and Jamie just like gave me pretty much what I needed.
It's not like it's original historic.
And they may not know that. They don't, they don't necessarily know that.
The timbers down under have been replaced once, so on and so forth. There are Hemlock timber. I mean, we're going all back to what's there now.
Or replacing it.
We're just replacing the rotted parts of it.
Right.
And then we're structurally strengthening the bridge.
So it's already, it's already got um uh modern things in it, and we are replacing those modern things. It's not gonna have more modern things. It's gonna have similar amounts of modern things.
It's all gonna be back to what it is right now.
Okay, so I will contact them, and I'll, I'll let you guys know.
We're gonna use light materials.
Thank you. Murray Hollow, um, remember, we had the partnership with Tratt Unlimited to replace the covert in Murray Hollow. And at the last minute, um, they thought they were all set, and then last minute, one of the owners of the camp, remember, there's nobody upstream with a permanent residence, and damn, one of those owners um refused to give permission for them to close the road. So they tried to work out a way to have a temporary crossing, which is easy, what is this dry, you know, but somehow they got to some, they're, through the crossways with this person, and Tratt Unlimited is unwilling to proceed under these circumstances. The Ranger Agri Mount National Forest, Martina Barnes, who has been here about purchases and things, she doesn't wanna abandon the project, because remember, it connects to the, the things, parcels that they're interested in, and they are very, the aquatic organism passages and fish passages is very important to them. So she wants to meet with the landowner, and she wants someone from the town to go, and I said, Mark is busy enough. So I said, I would go if the board wants me to. It's possible we could work something out. It's possible they could get an extension to get the, the work done. I don't know. I just did not wanna, and I'm totally willing to do it. I do think that the landowner may not realize that um sooner or later we'll have to replace that covert, and that um replacing it makes it less likely that the covert will wash out. Um, and so it's actually to their advantage. But I actually do not know what the situation is there. So I'm totally willing to do this, but I want the board's permission. Okay, just a second. I want the board's permission before I, I do this, because it's probably gonna take four or five hours just getting over there, meeting with someone, coming back, and it's not, and, and I mean, I'm not getting everything done as it is. So I'll stop there and let Brian weigh in.
So they did send us a dry on this temporary road. Mark, he signed up on it. I've been trying to contact the guy who's been playing phone type back and forth. For me, as the fire department, um, so our first response in there is Shushing Fire Department is helping it out through the town, or I think their trucks are a lot bigger than ours, and what they're proposing, and if they didn't send it to you, I would send it to you. Um, the sharp terms on drying to me do not look like they will fit for our fire trucks. Um, so that would be a question that I would raise with them, and um, the thing is, is you know, it was gonna be twenty feet long, and he gave me all this weight stuff. You know, can't exceed thirty-two-hundred pounds, fifty-five-hundred pounds, and seventy-thousand pounds, which I don't understand why I just can't overrate, or you know, the weight can't be done. What are all the different things you're trying to tell me here? So, I mean, I'm sure Shushing's truck probably weighs close to sixty, seventy-thousand pounds. And so before I could tell the guy and sign off on it that he was okay, I had a bunch of questions, but I mean, I guess our times don't drive with each other. I drive throughout the day.
No, which guy, the landowner or the Tratt Unlimited guy?
Jacob.
Do, does Shushing have a brush truck?
They do have a brush truck.
Because a dr, a brush truck might be able to do it when a big truck wouldn't.
Well, when you get up there, you're gonna, your brush truck.
You've got full-size houses up there.
Right.
Their brush truck, at, at best is gonna have three hundred gallons of water.
Right.
So if we're, if we're trying to protect this landowner's house, right?
You can't do it.
You're not gonna do it three hundred gallons. That'll get you the first minute, maybe.
Right.
You know what I mean?
Hit that.
So...
I mean, I would love to go over there and, and be involved in this, but I'm probably not the right one, because I totally
I know you, I know you don't.
I'm against this project right from the start.
I understand.
The only place those fish are living right now is in the
No, I understand that, and, and I wish there was a pool like that, but, but it grew. So if it really is a fire protection thing, um, then it seems to me impossible for them to build a road, a temporary road that would accommodate actual fire trucks. I mean, I don't know what we would do if we were doing that. I don't, I don't know.
What would they do if it washes out?
Uh, so I mean, for me on the drawing, that's just what I was seeing. And I had some questions for him, you know, and it's hard to say on the drawing, and like I said, I also have it to to you and you reported to the rest if you guys didn't get it, but I mean, he's got sharp turns. That's not gonna work for us. You know, as far as what I'm looking at, it's not everything he's giving me for weights and everything are for skitters. Well, skitters and all that are articulated in the center. They can make any corner they want.
Yeah, because they're designed that way, you know, you can, yeah, yeah.
I think it would be worth having Cynthia meet with them and have the discussion, and I think from this discussion, you know enough to say if you're building a temporary passage, that it needs to be able to accommodate a fire truck.
A forty-foot-long fire truck.
Yeah.
Um, yeah.
And have that conversation and see, I think you have a good understanding of the project, understanding of what could happen if we don't do the project, and probably a good report to have that conversation with the landowner, and maybe do you guys compromise and come to a decision, or maybe not?
But it does sound, it does sound to me as if that landowner um would not unless they can do something that right now Brian does not see in their plan, that landowner would not have full fire protection during the time that they're doing this covert, and I don't see any way around that. Um, and so, and so either they accept that or they don't. And, and I can understand why they would say no, um, and we may just have to accept that.
I haven't, I haven't rode over there, but I remember when we did the rural road job, right? So we put in a covert similar to this by looking at his drawings.
Yeah.
You know, our passage wave was straight with some, some low culverts. I just don't understand why we gotta go out and hook a ninety to come, you know what I mean? If you can find a way to make the road so your rear off would have been straight, then I, I'm good with that, because we, that's what we did on
There might, there may be geological, geographical features or something, but I don't know.
I don't know.
But he's not a fi, he's not a fireman. I mean, see, you had the advantage. You were, when you were working on the highway, you were a fireman too, so you knew what the temporary road, okay.
I think it's important to mention with the homeowners too, that, well, if the covert washes out,
you don't have part.
You don't have fire protection either, so
Right.
it, you know, it...
It's gonna have to be bigger than Irene, because it held up perfectly fine with Irene.
It's been pretty dry though, and let's say we got it out for, right?
No, I just, I, I think, let's find out what's really going on and what's possible, and I think it's probably not gonna work, but I
It's worth a try.
The guidance before I do that, okay.
You have our approval.
The other thing is um, in terms of the Bleve Lock Road issue, I asked for some delays. I finally have a contract with a researcher from MFK who is going to look into the deeds and everything, and their task, they're not a lawyer, they're an engineer, their task is to tell us basically, based on what they see, where the flood road is. Remember, we have the John Wright survey, and we have gone with, that's where it is. So this is gonna be new eyes, looking at everything, looking at the different deeds, looking at John Wright's survey. But John Wright worked for Red Mountain LLC. This person works for us. And so um, so our lawyer said he felt we should have that. Um, and there are other people weighing in with their own, like Bruce Fleming is one of the neighbors, and he's a retired surveyor, so he adds his own version. So we will have our own person look at it, and um, you know, that means it's gonna take more time. It's gonna cost some money, but we're, we're moving forward with that, so that's good.
Yeah, it needs that.
Um, Mr., Mr. Kelly at the Covered Bridge, the lawyer has determined that he does in fact need a zoning permit for fencing in the highway right-of-way um and also in the flood plain, floodway. And so he needs that before the highway permit. So we've put the highway permit on hold, and I've written a letter asking him to apply for the zoning permit. The lawyer has approved that letter. It's not a letter from the lawyer, it's a letter from us, but she did not want me to send it until you guys had a chance to see it. But she did not want me to send it until you guys had a chance to see it. It just it literally just refers him to Joan. I already told him. I thought this is what he had to do verbally. But I hadn't heard from the lawyer for sure. Um so uh if the board is okay, I would like to mail that to the. Official addresses and also send it to him an email. I might take it by the house too.
In the first paragraph, did you have a comma after highway permit and before and? Gonna go to start sentence with and.
Uh let's see. Okay, in the first paragraph, the town will only attend consultations and determine that in order for your proposal. You exactly need both the zoning permit and the highway permit.
Yep. And then you start a new sentence with and.
Um yeah, that's just because I'm I'm sort of modifying that you need the zoning permit first. So in other words, you can't say I have a highway permit. I'm gonna go get the zoning permit because.
I would change that to say you are required. To obtain a zoning permit before you get the highway permit.
Okay, that's fine. That's better.
Or something to that. Just don't start the sentence with and.
No, 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 I shouldn't. I shouldn't have done that because you see what they permit may be different from what we might have permitted. So he has had it. So I will make those changes. I'll make those changes.
I'm good with everything else. That was.
Okay.
Sorry, mistake.
No, 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 I think that's a I think that's a great improvement. Um okay, so I'll do that and then just for fun, um I have um written a letter. To another landowner that actually has a fencing next to the abutment of a bridge, which has been discussed in public here. And I have verified that the barbed wire is still there and that it's within the twenty five feet from the center line and. I believe that just in terms of consistency, we need to write that landowner and ask them to remove the barbed wire. Um and it's not a it's not a lawyer's letter. It's not saying what we'll do. Otherwise, it's just saying, please do this and then if they don't. If they don't, then we can see what we're gonna do. Is that okay?
Consistency with everybody.
Yeah. All right.
I do have a question on Kelly.
Yes.
The last time, and it's been a few weeks now since I walked down under the bridge. Still had the posts and like a rope that was definitely below the high water line.
Everything done with the water's been removed.
Baton Kilke, has he removed that finally? Okay. That it's been, it was like two or three weeks.
Post up top.
Yeah.
Okay.
And he actually moved one down toward the tree line.
I saw that.
Where Mark and I had suggested that's where he cut it off.
Yeah.
Um to the tree line. That way it's all bushes beyond that.
It's been a few weeks since I walked down there and there was.
I do believe after the fishing game officers were there that all.
Okay. I'll double check it because I need to go take a photo for work, so we'll go down and. Have some ride period entertainments.
Okay, so um so that's all for.
Highway.
Highway. I think that was enough.
Okay, yeah, they are doing some summer grading right now. They're wetting the road, grading.
They did a standing job with Red Mountain.
Oh, that's another thing. Somebody asked about striping for the pavement part of Red Mountain.
God, no.
And um you may remember the same as um problems we had the last time we had that done. Yeah, and um and that pickup truck with the yellow.
There is no.
So so I asked Mark about it and he said there's um there's like only one company that does it and they're doing a piss. For job, like apparently they did another town and one lane was five feet wide and one one was eighteen feet wide and those. You should hear the language that that highway chief was using about it. So um so I can't remember what other roads we've ever done that on. I I know people go probably go too fast. It's a difficult road, but. I don't know that uh I mean, I know we're not doing it this year.
One broke and he started rolling typical. I'm not sure if they do that.
Okay.
But.
All right, well, it's next year.
I think it was only.
Same guy did Red Mountain last time and we are.
The only time Red Mountain was ever striped was the last time.
When we had a disaster, yeah.
One side was four feet and the other side was, I don't know.
But then also it exploded. I mean, there were gouges and paint.
Yeah, it got all over somebody's vehicle.
So I mean, this is not, this is not the priority and it's something we may revisit in the future, but we have no problem.
The challenge with striping it is that you have that really sharp turn. As you, you know, act well, when you first turn off a seven A, you've got the first sharp turn, which is almost like a ninety. And then you have another hairpin turn.
And it's coming down and it's up and down.
And it's up and down because coming down, there's a different hairpin and. Eh you know, to get a. A striping machine to do that accurately. Takes some real skill that.
And there's probably a special machine that can be adjusted to that.
Adjusted to that because it's not gonna be the standard wide boom truck that they use, so I. I don't think that it warrants the expense.
I I mean, I don't.
If people actually followed the twenty five mile an hour speed limit and stayed on their side of the road, we would be okay.
Is it worth putting up a keep right sign or something like that? I mean.
I I don't think so. I think, I mean, I drive up and down at least once a day, right? It's. I mean.
People be crazy.
I I don't know, I.
Because there became a problem. You could always measure the center of your lane and just put a dotted line down through the.
I mean, you'd be better off doing a rattle can and.
Just a six five.
Interesting, yeah.
Measure the center of the lines and then just do a dotted line. So you're not trying to hold the whole yawn.
Right, right. On the on the outside and everything. That's an interesting.
Like you said, if people just do the speed limit, they're fine, but if it ever came down to it.
Yeah. That is a really interesting idea, but okay, so.
You know, you get one of those. The rattle, you just put it in and walk it up and just measure it off and have Shane measure it and you follow the tape up. Would be a better way to do it, to be honest.
I think that's very.
Little trapper, just like we're doing the field.
Yeah, just like the field. That's exactly what I was thinking with that. Well, the rattle can and the little fussy thing.
Yeah. And and put a post. And just run it with a rope.
Yeah. Okay.
One one way it's gonna get.
I don't wanna have to uh pay to clean a vehicle again.
No, no, no.
We paid more than we paid for the straight.
Exactly.
Fixing a vehicle, so.
All right, so we're on to the red part. And Willie's here. You're on.
Uh, boss forces come along good. Uh Joe was here again today. We shut off the afternoon. Waring, uh the greens are taking. Uh he said, uh maybe by next week. We can start planning. So I double cut it today. Yep.
You cut them today?
I cut them. I cut them last week.
Wow, so that so they're that they're that? Wow.
Yeah, so we just would raise the deck up on the on the greens mower itself. So we're cutting at five eights. We'll cut again. I cut today again at five eights uh with the basket to get all the clippings because it wasn't quite as bold. As he wanted to see it, so um I'll do it again this week and then we're gonna start taking the. Cause there was a plate that I used to measure everything off and then what I'll do is he said one turn. All the way, which is gonna start dropping the blade down further. Go to five eights, then I'll be down to like half an inch next week. And then we'll pump it two times and then a week after that, we'll be down to about half an inch. Let's see where we're at because there's still a lot of. Rolling polies in it that need to get, you know, worked out, but uh no, they're 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 super, super nice.
Super nice.
Yep, and the watering thing, you know, starting to get a handle on the node, setting up times and taking away times, so. Uh that's a bonus. Uh we got uh. Uh two quarter lits for the last week's games. Uh they came and got that today. DJ finally called me from. When they got home from vacation. Uh we're gonna scope that line on Wednesday, Wednesday, probably Wednesday morning or something like that. Uh just we're gonna, there's something going on in there. I mean, it shouldn't be, and then we'll figure out what's gonna happen. You know, he'll go all the way with the tank and then we can, you know, go from there.
And you haven't had a backup problem since.
No, no.
So maybe it was.
I mean, we're hoping it's just a fluke, but I just feel like it was done six months ago. I probably shouldn't have done that again.
Right.
As in in so much volume too. I mean, that was a.
That would just reach yourself.
I mean, something there, so. That and then Matt came last week and we got the cameras set up. You gotta turn the camera upside down because the camera light out was middle. So you just turn the monitor upside down and and I still haven't got it changed, but they're up and running and then if you need to see yourself, you know, every board's. On motion, right? That's how it was, so. They're not on twenty four hours a day. I mean, the screen is on twenty four hours a day, but when it gets motion, they'll turn on, so. That's the board's. And every board's.
I mean, nothing, it's nothing fancy, but it serves our purpose to see who's coming and going.
Yep.
Um, yeah, we'll work on a bigger project there while we're trying. Yeah. And stickers, you got stickers up?
Perfect. And then after you left and only flush toilet paper. And we did have some more visitors, um so I'm sure.
And um Willie was wondering if we could, the town could get a gift certificate for Mr. Charverall because he's. Been so generous with the time, like a gift certificate to George or something like that. I think we've done things like that before, you know.
Anything right now?
I mean, even if it's, you know, even like bullying or something, where you like well, have been in that.
Yeah.
Develop that he has saved us is in the.
And he is still working on the entire permitting project as well, which he's focused to finish up over the winter.
The legend factor, which is he's gonna start working on here this way because that's gonna, that's gonna take a minute to do.
Yep.
He's gotta figure out some really rugged stuff left in the highway.
Okay.
But, you know, that's. You know, if you if you had a privateer come in there, you would have been.
Or maybe.
Paying more for that.
The West Mountain Inn or. Yeah, something like that, something like that.
Okay.
Right, the West Mountain Inn, they still serve dinner, don't they? But it's always been very, very good.
I'll talk to Jan. I'll.
Yeah, yeah.
Um in terms of the restroom, the restrooms, um I was talking to Matt before uh before the meeting started and. But one thing that I wanna put out there is that I think the restrooms need to close when the the season is over. Um and I think that we may need to have locks on the restrooms in the future and have some sort of system where. The pooches have the the combination. You can get it from Willie or you can get it from the town hall or something. Um I just I just don't know, um but I'm just very concerned about the possibility. Of a child coming in contact with some sort of drug paraphernalia and something happening, so I'm not pushing for that now. Um I think, you know, let's go forward as we are, but but I just wanted to mention that as something that we may ultimately have to consider.
Does that become a problem now in that way?
Well, it's becoming a little bit of an issue, a little bit of an issue.
You think that's part of why the backup happened because paraphernalia was, no, he saw a little in what backed up.
And you know, I mean, that problem is not unique to the red part. It's a problem that. Service restaurants and retailers are all experiencing. Um I. In conversation with Cynthia earlier, we're seeing some national retailers take a very creative approach to this. Um, so we'll just kind of watch that and see how it plays out. Um for closure at the end of the season after soccer is done. And we close those restrooms up. The one thing that I noticed when I was there with Willie is that somebody had kicked in the men's room door. And remember those swing inward. So I think when we close those at the end of the season, excuse me. It would be worth investigate investing in a couple sheets of three quarter inch plywood that we paint. Nice white or whatever and we just screw it on.
The door frame.
The door frames because then you can't kick the door in, right? Because you got the plywood on the outside. And we just kind of seal those off that way because.
Oh, you mean after we lock it?
After we lock it at the end of the season because the men's room door has already been kicked in and can't be locked anyways and it's current state.
Right, right. That makes sense.
Yeah, that does make sense.
You know, and then next year in the spring when we open it, I think we'll have some good data and some ideas so we can make a decision on how we want. To handle that situation. You know, it's unfortunate because. People are losing more and more access to public restrooms because of these problems. Um but. At to your point, it's also a liability issue that we don't want somebody to come in contact with something that they shouldn't, so. Um I think we can muster through this year for the rest of, we're only a month and a half, two months left and. Um that would be my recommendation though is that we really button those up good at the end of the season this year. And I think the door to the office on the backside had been jimmyed or something. And that doesn't lock reliably either, so um it may be worth having the locksmith like Adams or somebody. Come and get two dead bolts on those center office doors coming keyed on either side.
Okay.
When you do that, use three quarter C D X. It's probably the best structural. Not particulate, not N D or anything.
Yeah, so I was thinking like marine grade three quarter plywood.
Or or even just C D X.
C D X.
Will do it, but it's.
Not the.
Seven or eight layers.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you you'd be hard pressed to pick like three quarters deckboard. All right.
And then.
So one other question about the park and the restrooms and were you planning to. Were you gonna do some concrete work, get jazz there? Are we still thinking about doing that?
Yeah, just waiting for the end of the season now at this point.
Gotcha.
So digging it up and trying to keep people out, but you know.
Okay.
By the end of October, we'll have a pretty good, I I think the last day to play is October seventeenth this year for.
We'll know how many more games we have from the girl's standpoint and our standpoint and then we can just.
Was there something about the softball field?
Yes.
Um yeah, Jamie had had a proposal and I created a form um for him to use to to. Figure out what we're gonna do.
So we had Pete Genoas, Todd and I met with Pete Genoas. Um Pete Genoas builds all the fields for Bennington. Williamstown, um North Adams Street does a good majority of the fields. Um in the whole South Shire area. Um so we had him up to look at the park. Um because as you know, we had some problems with the individuals who were there who are back there. Um, not real happy about that either, but anyways. They're there. They've um last year they pulled the cores out of the base lines, moved everything. Um, home plate was moved, pitcher's mound was moved, everything was moved. And in order to get that back to where it is, um where it's supposed to be. Um we had Pete Genoas come in, look the field over, do a bunch of layouts. Um total cost is nearly sixteen thousand dollars. Now, the school is going to take care of some of that. I had a conversation with Kathy about that. Um with the red clay that's down, we are gonna need two loads of that. Um. Pete had it included in his here, but um Nate is willing to go and get it and bring it to us at no cost. Um for trucking and we'll just pay for the material. Um that was kind of his donation to this whole project. Um which brings us down about four thousand dollars. Um so we're down to around twelve thousand dollars. Now, that includes new bases. That includes straightening the field, infield outfield edge, which is way off. Um it's not even close to the round that it's supposed to be. Um putting the foul lines back to where they should be. The right field foul line right now is eleven feet out of square from where it's supposed to be. That's keeping the left field line um where it is currently. Otherwise, you'd have to move them both. Um and we felt that the left field line needs more space with more balls being hit that way typically. Um to the fence, so um. But it's about two weeks worth of work overall with some specialized equipment to get in there, turn everything over, mix it all together. Cut the the grass out, put real sod back in again from Saratoga sod. Um so there's there's a lot of work. Um he is willing to work with us a little bit, but he would really like to see this done this fall. So that it is ready for spring when the season opens up and gets going. So that puts a little pressure on us to come up with some funding and try and find that. I am willing to go to the park committee again. But um their meetings aren't for a little bit now. Um and I didn't have all this prior to their last one, so. In any event, that's that's where we're. In any event, that's, that's where we're at, trying to get that field. Next would be the baseball field, but we've got some other ideas on that too, so we're not worried about that right yet, and that would be more. Um, I think school aligned with that one, because, um, this one gets used by. Everybody where the baseball field only really gets used by the school, so. But in order to put this field back to where it is, we had youth softball, we had middle school softball, high school softball. Everybody's down there now, um, I think there were a couple of men's games down there, so. Again, the school is willing to donate some with, with the, the clay and stuff, but they don't wanna. Fully pay for this because so many other people are using it and it is a town-owned property, so.
And my, my question, we have to figure out about the paying for it and trying to do it this fall, which seems kind of crunched, but. My question too is, um, given the amount, would we need to go out to bid? Or could we justify this as a single source in the sense that this guy is an expert, he's diagnosed and he's come up with the plan? And so we're going with him, we're not getting, I mean, if we're using our money, I don't, you know, I don't know if we can do that or not, I, I don't know, um. Cause.
I don't know, and again, if I go to the park committee, um. I don't know what to, I mean, our golf course is probably gonna come in under budget from what we had originally. So maybe we can transfer some of those funds over, um, to work on the softball field and we're getting two for one then.
That's right, that's right, and I don't know if they have a rule about how much money they allocate every year, you know, in terms of, of. So, so I'm, I mean, I'm willing to work to, um, to.
No, Matt and I have talked about this a few times and I didn't get a chance to see Glenn cause he's been poaching every night.
Right, and I, and I can develop this, put in more specifics into the.
And I can get more.
But then also you can take that to the park and rec and then they have something to look at, which I think is really important.
Um, Pete did say he would, he would like to get this started as soon as possible, um. And he would be willing to do some. Fifty percent upfront and then we could wait a while and, and get the rest of the budget figured out. I don't know if anybody's interested in something like that, and I would want more specifics from him.
I don't think we do upfront stuff.
So.
I mean, I think people bill us and we pay them.
Yep.
Um, I don't think we do.
What was the total amount again?
Well, that's what I'm saying, he would take, he would do the work, pay.
I thought you meant money I had.
No, no.
What was the total amount?
Um, with everything that he's got included in there, it was sixteen two twenty-four. But we can take off about four thousand dollars for the, the slate, the red slate.
No, the play, play.
Play.
So I think that, so I will try to develop the, um, if you've got any notes on that and I, I can make a copy of it, um. And I will try to develop that and get that to, to Jamie and so he can use that with the park, um. I don't, um, I think that, I think that Christian sent us, um, the August financials. And I just haven't had time to look at.
I didn't, I don't think I saw or I missed them.
Um, and so.
Well, why don't you look and see where.
Get back to you guys, um, in terms of, of what's actually available.
Yeah, something related, but not directly. Um, we have not adjusted. The numbers on our spending policy and I wanna say probably close to twenty years. A thousand, uh, over ten thousand.
I think we did it with Nick.
Seems like it's been a while.
But we may need to revisit the purchasing policy.
No other reason, inflation in the last five years.
Two point eight.
And I think, and I think with state money or federal money, there's rules about sourcing and getting bids and everything. But if it's just our money or it's park and rec money.
That falls under our purchasing policy.
Yeah.
But under our purchasing policy, we just need to periodically revisit that to make sure we're not. Having ridiculously low numbers on stuff that we're.
Yeah.
Okay, right now, um, right now, um. The town administrator can approve expenditures that are typical of government up to ten thousand dollars. But I usually.
I don't blame you.
We may wanna just update that after the first, after the new year starts next year.
Putting out on the radar so that we don't. It is important about some of these bidding projects and even smaller stuff, you know. Thousand these days seems to be ridiculously low.
Right.
Um, for authorization, just say a department head. So I just think we need periodically, maybe every five years, update those numbers to realistic current day numbers.
I thought when we updated it, Nick put a line in the bottom that said that we would revisit that annually or every two years.
Yeah, it should be at least every five years, but I know it was that way for.
I would say we should do it every two years at this point.
If, if inflation is going crazy, it's every year. Right now it seems to have calmed down a little bit. But there was, there was a while that our burn was just like doubling over here.
So Cynthia, you're gonna, once you get those financials figured out.
Yes.
Yeah, sixteen two twenty-four total. Each load of, uh, hadekka mix is twenty-three ten delivered. Um, but that was with them delivering it, where Nate is doing it for no cost.
So we're looking for like twelve and change.
Yeah.
Um, and, and I know you mentioned, um, talking to Kathy Beer, where in terms of the whole relationship between the school and the park. I have, uh, tried to contact her, I haven't heard back, she's probably just overwhelmed. I'm gonna like try again, just to try to. You know, make sure that it's worked.
She's only four seasons and she's away.
No, I, I, I under, I understand. I mean, I, it was a while ago that I sent the email, but she's probably like me, she's got tons of emails, so. I'm gonna follow, but I, but that was something that the board had mentioned and I have, um, tried to move on that.
So Pete, what he messaged me was because of the timing, I'm gonna take a look at my schedule, maybe what we can do. Maybe half that time of completion, half later or something like that, we can be flexible.
Yeah, that would be, that would be.
If we can split it into two separate tax shares, that would be good. No, he's only waiting.
Um, he did order bases and those have come in, those are about five hundred dollars. Because the bases were destroyed.
And we could always go ahead and purchase those from him, you know, depending on.
At a further meeting, we'll discuss the rest of the baseball thing to, with a little aid.
Okay. Anything else for the park?
Um, no, the only other thing Matt and I had talked about was a little bit was initial, getting some internet down there. Eventually and pulling those old copper lines and, and feeding some internet cables in, um.
My question is if that. Old, uh.
Conduit.
Repair is in conduit or not? I don't know if it's directly or if it's in conduit.
Yep.
So, I mean.
We have conduit on either end, but we don't know what's in the middle.
Yeah, but I have another solution, it's not preferred, um. You know, the other thing is that if we're doing some sort of. You know, that might be an early spring project to put a conduit in. Too, and that's not out of the question, it's just. We do have to cross some pavement, which is problematic unless we lateral pour.
Um, so one of the things that has been required by the BPA is to have an AED on site of any. Sporting events, and we have a lot of sporting events down there. Um, so they do make some security cases for AEDs. Which do hook up to the internet and they pass the siren. And such like when the case is open or if the case is open, they also can send a signal to a responder.
Um, I think that's still useless though, because by the time anybody get there, it would be long gone. Um, but thank you for mentioning that to me because it raised the point for me to remember. Uh, I wanted to look to see if there was a grant, I know a couple places to poke around for that. Because my thought was a good solution for that would be to get. A grant or one that the coaches could take there for the school. So have a portable one that's specific, or maybe we give the coaches a key to, to the office. Or, or some to a cabinet somehow, or I don't know, someplace where it's common that they could come and get it. To take there, to have for the school sporting event and then bring it home. I don't think there's a requirement for us to provide that for other organizations that use the field. They may have a requirement to bring their own, or they may choose to bring their own. Um, but that was the other way that I wanted to kinda. Cut this is to see if we could just, it's the cheaper and safer way to do it probably is to make sure that. We get a grant so that we could get one and it could be brought and then. The coach also knows where it is because it's with my coach's bag of stuff that I bring to the game. I, I just feel like if you put one in a cabinet, it's gonna get stolen and by the time anybody gets there, I'm gonna go, yep, it's gone.
Well, I mean, the other thought of that was if there was a camera right there on it. So.
I think this is something, I think this is something that's very important to have available at the games. Um, I think it's really important to have it there, but I think how we do that does, does have further discussions. The other thing is the, the, like the Vermont Principals Association or somebody else or V L C T might have some ideas in terms of. How other.
Bennington Rescue was just doing a grant program for AEDs, so.
Yeah, I'll look around and see, because that, I think that would be the best solution short term is to get an AED through a grant program. So that the coaches could just bring that.
If we put a lock box down there or something that. And they can access it, they have the code for. Which can be helpful on the golf course and wherever else should be needed.
Okay.
Yep.
So everything for the parks, all set?
Yep.
Fire Department, you're up. Purchasing insurance reimbursement, some possible ordinance for saying. So Matt, do you wanna start or I'm ready to start?
Well, I have the, I'll handle the ordinance, but why don't you go through the other, your other items?
So I think the purchase thing was going to handle both from the last meeting. As you know, I've come and asked about my business. To purchase the card. Um.
We haven't gotten that far yet.
Yeah, I know, but it's on here. I wasn't expecting to talk on when you said that, so just a reminder, you know, because. A lot of stuff they find in, you know, and you know, that's the past, it's here. A lot of stuff you can get it at, unless rates, like we're going online, doing our own shopping. But it just seems the schedule's going beat up, that part, like, you know, not being a. Town employee where I can go down here the whole day and see everybody and all that, I was just looking if we could come up with some sort of. Purchasing cards so that we could, um, purchase this kind of stuff. And, and then as far as like our pickup with gas, you know, there's times the camp leaves not open. That's the only place we can get gas for, you know, or we have to try to put it in and. Out of our own pockets to make sure that we're ready to respond when we've been gone on a Sunday up on the Geller's stand all day. You know, and we come back and Sunday, Mondays, camp leaves are closed, that's the only place that we can go get gas. So there's quite a few things in that as far as the truck, the side by sides, any of that stuff.
The gas would probably be easy to slice with a fleet card. Um. We'll have to look into the, I still need to look into the P card programs that are available for government municipalities. The one thing that I would note about. If we had, even if we had a P card program and you're purchasing online. We have to ensure that you're buying tax exempt. Yeah, so that is the one little administrative kind of sticky wicket, if you will. Um, that I see with that because.
Which we could sell.
Kind of problematic.
You know, as far as like Amazon, any of them, uh, you can set all that up through your business. For all the things same way the town did here, you know what I mean? Any of that stuff, just it requires a payment right then, not like for.
So the town is set up with Amazon that we are tax exempt and we can pay by invoice. So we don't have to pay right at this time, so that's really good. I was able to just use the credit card with Dan's approval to buy things for the fire, fire department the first time I'd done that. And the sites that they were buying from were so specialized that they allowed me to just say, hey, I'm a fire department. And they believed, you know, so, so, um, and so we did not pay the tax. Um, I have a concern about, um, about how many people will be doing this. And, um, would they be able to successfully put in the tax exempt? And having control over what's happening with the cards, and I don't understand about how the banks do these kinds of cards, and I think. There would probably be appropriate controls. I do think the gas is particularly, I think that's a particularly urgent kind of thing that you have to get gas.
I think that's probably easier.
Yeah, so I'm, and, and I'm, you know, I'm open, I'm open to anything, but I do want the board to know that I did, um. That I did go ahead and do it and I'm fine with if they wanna send, if particularly if Brian sends me. This is what we need, I will order it, you know, unless it's so, so much money that I need your approvals, I will order it and I will be faster than I have been. It's just taken me a while to get used to doing things this way and, um, so. And I apologize for that, but I do wanna encourage, um, Brian or Willie to, to, you know. Let me know what you need and I will try to be faster than I've been in the past.
And the, the way Nick and I were doing that seemed to work okay, was he would just text me. And he'd be like, this for the fire department, ball, block, wherever it is, and I would just literally text him back approved.
Right.
And then, cause my name's the one on the card, that way it protects you, it protects me, it protects them.
Right.
It's all in a sequence and it's, it can easily be done over text.
Right, but. I have, right now, remember, I have a private cell phone that's not paid for by the town, I'm not using it for town business, I'm not texting. I may have to do that, but when Dan was away, what I did when I wasn't able to get him is I emailed both him and Matt saying, this is what I'm doing. And then eventually. Yeah, and I felt that was, you know, that covered it and because it was. So, so yeah, I think it can work, it can work just fine and I will try to be more expeditious in the future.
Okay.
Um, so we have talked previously about, uh, service reimbursement. Uh, insurance billing, if you will, for the fire department. Um, and we do have an original ordinance on that that was adopted. Um, late two thousand four and the rate card was built in January of two thousand five. And that is the Arlington Fire Department Service Reimbursement Ordinance. Um, it's important to note that the purpose of the ordinance is not to charge for fire protection in the town of Arlington. The purpose of the ordinance is to, for cost recovery, really of cons, what I'm gonna call consumable or expendable items. That are used primarily in traffic accidents or hazmat situations. As well as cost recovery for like a search and rescue would be a good example. Um, I reviewed our original service reimbursement ordinance. And I have provided an amended service, uh, reimbursement ordinance, an amended policy to that or ordinance amendments. Um, I give you just a really fast rundown, uh, cause I don't want this to go forever, but you know, article one is our general. Visit, uh, provisions, which officially titles the ordinance, references the appropriate statutes. Uh, does clarify the purpose for cost recovery. Um, liability shield it provides as well as proper filing with the town clerk. Um, our definitions obviously cover, uh, the definitions or terms related, uh, to the incidents that are applicable. Um, eligible occurrences, um, lists the incident types that are billable. Uh, enforcement, uh, is article, uh, four. Uh, the responsibility lies with the select board, um, the select board. Delegate enforcement and invoicing. Uh, article five, uh, talks specifically about invoicing. Uh, six is ordinance management, uh, then we go on to servability, liability and amendments and the ordinance at force. So I did create a change control document, I don't know if that was in here, uh, in your packet. You have, uh, an amended. You have uh, an amended service reimbursement ordinance and the amendments that I made, I do see what typo I need to make on that.
Yeah, I mean, I have, I I I, some of the. Some things, documents seem to be marked up, but if if there was color highlighting, it didn't come through. In the saving and printing process.
Either it's just stamped with draft and then there's a proposed, um. Uh, there's a change, a separate document that I sent you Cynthia that had the change control that showed everywhere that I made.
Okay, then I, then I didn't.
Dishments or.
I didn't get, I didn't look thoroughly enough.
Didn't look through all, there was four attachments. Yeah, no, that's okay.
But I went through everything side by side and all of Matt's changes make perfect sense. I mean, he's adding things that we were not aware of before. I mean, everything that he did makes perfect sense.
So I'll go through real fast here, um, the amendment change control. So the original ordinance was enacted and became effective August twentieth of two thousand four and has not been updated since becoming effective. The rates uh, and fee schedule was adopted on January twenty fourth of two thousand five and it's not been updated since. As you look at the draft uh, amended ordinance in Article two definitions, I added and clarified definitions in the ordinance. We added alarm activations, emergency system, fire alarms, fire chief, firefighter. Hazardous material incident, malicious incident, non-emergency incident, permitted burn. Primary coverage area, rescue calls pertaining to search and rescue. Special event, wildland fire and willful disregard. Under. Article three eligible occurrences. We added. H I N J, so we added hazardous material incidents, special events and wildland fires. Caused by negligence. In Article five invoicing. We edited line E to be specific as rescue calls pertaining to search and rescue. The previous just said rescue calls, which was ambiguous. Edited F to change that from CVPS to Green Mountain Power.
Shows you how old we.
Added H, which defines wildland fire shall be invoiced per occurrence with individuals responsible. For the fire being held responsible. We moved uh, the previous item H to item I. We've added item J, which states special events shall be invoiced per occurrence. For the property owner or event organizer responsible is indicated at the time of event planning. So there may be somebody in town that's having some sort of special event that requires. Fire department standing by, let's say it's a big fireworks spectacular or something and they want a fire truck there. Then we as a board have the ability to say we will provide that at a specific cost, whatever that may be. Um, and we would have flexibility as to what that cost would be, uh, that'll be covered later. Uh, we moved item I to. The previous item I to item K, which was our invoicing reimbursement rate line. And we added L, which outlines the reimbursement costs incurred by the town of Arlington. For emergency and non-emergency response by the Arlington Fire Department shall be sought only for the occurrences and incidents. In Article three and only as follows and there are four bullet line items there. Uh, unless otherwise uh, specified in this ordinance. Occurrences and incident types and it goes through A, C, D, E, G and H. In Article three shall after investigation by the select board. Fire chief and or law enforcement be invoiced to the person or persons responsible. Equipment costs for engine tanker, rescue vehicle, trucks, boat, all terrain vehicles, snowmobiles and other related equipment utilized. Support apparatuses such as tools, hose, ladder, et cetera. Gear such as personal protective equipment and related paraphernalia. On on number three, consumable items. Used at the scene of an incident that are replaceable supplies and will include that are not limited to phone and hazmat containment. It is anticipated that these items will be billed at replacement cost with a fifteen percent service fee. And number four, other charges and fees following the tone of Arlington reimbursement and rate fee schedule. Um, that will bring us to, sorry, my screen went dark, uh. Our ordinance enforce line item and that would be five and number eight. Uh, which actually uh, we got moved to nine. Uh, Article nine became ordinance enforced and we just amended the dates in those. Um, we added the appeals process in Article eight. Which states uh, how one would appeal a billing uh, under this ordinance. And then on the rate update card. We have updated the um. All of the rates that were outlined in our original amen, our original ordinance. We accounted for an average annual rate of inflation of two point five five percent per year. Which we arrived at a cumulative rate of sixty four point nine three percent over the two thousand five rates that were indicated. Uh, all of the new rates were based, uh, were increased based on the cumulative inflation rate. Uh, in number three, under specific equipment or consumables. We added a fifteen percent service charge for those billings. And in number four, which was related to Green Mountain Power, uh, we changed CVPS to Green Mountain Power. Uh, in emergency incidents related to Green Mountain Power, GMP will not be billed until the second hour. And we added line item number five, which indicated special events billed per event at an agreed upon rate by the select board at the time of event. Planning. Um, you'll see that it would bring our first hour fees. Uh, there would be a minimum fee of six hundred and fifty dollars for the first hour of any incident or fraction thereof. That rate was based on three hundred and thirty dollars per apparatus and ten firefighters at thirty two dollars per hour per firefighter. Uh, our apparatus fee is three hundred and thirty per hour. Per apparatus involved in the scope of the incident after the first hour. And personnel was thirty two dollars per hour per person. For those personnel involved in the scope of the incident after the first hour. And I already mentioned the consumables billed at replacement cost plus fifteen percent service fee. So that is the first reading of the draft uh, ordinance uh, amendment. And I noticed one typo in there, which I will make, I think at the next select board meeting, we can, we will have the second reading. Of that and can open it to a public hearing, so. Um. At this point, I'll take comments or thoughts.
I might have, I might have missed it in there, but one thing that I'd like to see put in there, cause we did say that. We weren't going to bail for fires. One thing I'd like to see in there is for medical fires. Um, because I'm in the process that's electric vehicles and this is electric vehicles, so I'll state that definitely. Uh, we're looking at tools to help with the electric vehicle fires, uh, as far as fire blankets, specialized nodules because they're hard to put out. And a lot of these are one-time use item. So I'd like to see a line in there for electric vehicle fires where we can reduce the cost on that.
So there's motor vehicle accidents, but not motor vehicle fires.
Cause we said that, you know, cause we are, we we serve, you know, we protect as a fire service.
I think it's a really good call out because if at a minimum, there would be consumable items. At any motor vehicle fire, even if it's not involved in a motor vehicle accident. Right, you would have.
I mean, it is essentially a kind of accident, a fire is a kind of, I mean, it's not a collision.
That's it, it's not a collision, but I think um. Because you probably have like, there would be fluids leaking. Or you might have to use foam to put it out.
Most likely gonna be a hazardous materials.
Well, and that's why I said I might have missed where it would have fell in, but I just wanna point that out because the top thing says, you know, we're not gonna charge for fire.
So I think that's a good call out.
Something totally different.
We can add that as an eligible incident and.
Structured fires, you could say we're not charging for structured.
No, cause that's.
Well, that's a fire protection. I think we could call out motor vehicle fires specifically in here and I can make the appropriate um. You know, to talk about invoicing around that or consumable items, so. Uh, I will make that for our second reading, I will uh, make that change and add that in there. Other, other thoughts?
I'm going to look into the wildland fire building side of this because that has to come through the ordinance and it goes through the state.
Okay.
Um, and I know we have done that in the past a couple of times. But it required getting social security numbers and all that from every member on scene and all that. And all had to go through the state. And then was reimbursed back.
Preset to the lowest paid town employee.
Yes, it is.
I'm sure, but it's always worth the ask.
Yep, so I'll ask.
You should look into that and I.
Talk to Kelsey about that.
I know I looked at a few other municipalities ordinances, so that's where I learned a lot about. The wildland fires, but it would be good to double check that. I'll take a note that you're gonna look into that.
While we're on wildland fires, um, we received notice today from the state of absolutely no.
I was gonna mention that in other business.
Exemptions are backyard players and can't cross.
Why? No way.
I still haven't burned my Christmas tree for how many years ago? God, no, my, my yard is like the Sahara. Um. Is there any other, did anybody have any other thoughts in here? I know it went from a two-page document.
No, that was the general idea of what we wanted to start with this.
So there's a second part to this that once we um. And I'll explain the fifteen percent service fee on the consumables and how and why I came to that. There's a second part to this and that's actually performing the bill. And. I've toyed with a number of ideas to propose in my head, but I think where I'm at, the best idea at this point. Is that there are. Companies that. Specialize in doing this and they specialize in actually doing this automatically and they can integrate with the fire department's RMS system. And the chiefs can have an app on the tablet as well. To actually take photos of the proper documents and fill everything out immediately. So basically, by the time you're leaving the scene of a motor vehicle accident, they're already billing the insurance company. And the way insurance billing works is it's first in, first out, so. If you're not right there and there's a time limit as to how long you have to bill anyhow. And I think that's where some of the downfall on the ordinance previously. Came because it required the fire department to fill out a paper form, which then came down two weeks later to the select board and then Mary would bill it. And so we were probably four weeks out and a lot of times we would miss the window of opportunity for the payment. But the companies that will do the billing for us just take a contingency. And so that's where I arrived at the service fee on the consumables, which is primarily what we're trying to recover for. We're not really making money at all on this ordinance. The idea is that. Um, we cover consumables, speedy dry, maybe it's booms for hazardous weight uh, materials or foam. Because we had to use foam to put out a motor vehicle fire or whatever you use that for, I should be more um. Probably educated on what I use that for, but. It's to cover those consumables, gloves, um, I'm gonna consider water is a consumable at a fire scene, right? We have to stay hydrated, so bottled water, those kind of things that we can cover. Um, as well as if we had a loss of equipment or maybe a loss of PPE or something like that. That we can cover that through um, our consumables line item. And with a fifteen percent service fee on that, basically an outsourcer then becomes awash for us. And it really streamlines the process. It makes it easy for the responders on the scene. To do that in their tablet, it's, it can integrate with run management, so. We know that you went on a call that this is available, this falls under our eligible billing policy and. You checked the ten items you used and you know, we've got preset rates for what those consumables are. On your most commonly used items. And then that billing happens all automatically and we would get a report and a check in theory back, so. That's a second phase to this after we have an updated ordinance, because there's no way that we could. Really bring somebody on board to that and say, oh, here's our ordinance anyways from two thousand four that we haven't looked at. And so we get this straightened out and I did.
The ordinance been bringing up.
That's correct, and if you look under invoicing too, and I think I forgot to mention it, um, somewhere in here. Uh. Shoot, is that we authorize the select board or its authorized agent. An authorized agent was added in there so that we could do the billing through an outsourcer. Um, because they would act as our authorized agent, so really. I mean, the idea is that, you know, we get that money back, consumable money I think would go. You know, right back into the equipment line item so that you could purchase a pallet of speedy dry and stuff like that that you need. And then if there was um. The way it was. Discussed originally in two thousand four is that apparatus and per man fee that occurs. Those funds go into the fire truck sinking fund. To help offset some of the cost for new fire trucks so that we don't always have to put the burden on the taxpayers.
So one of the other things we had discussed with that way back when, and I was the one that pushed for this to come through when I was chief. Um, was our extrication equipment is a consumable. Because that is very expensive.
It gets damaged and.
Specialized equipment and to put money back in to replace that.
Sure.
Um, now we're going all electric or battery, so. Again, that's.
It's even more costly. You know, we could be break that down as far as more red flags and you know, we used both cutters. And one spreader, right? We could have a rate for them if you guys wanted to, to help replace. That said line, I, you know, that said item.
And it's a consumable because it only can operate so many times and.
Tip may break and then you gotta replace like that.
So I think.
Especially with the app would be easy to do that, so we use two cutters and a spreader.
And the way we've structured this is that would be covered under specific equipment or consumables. And so then we can set a rate for that, that you bill against that on, so. Um. Cynthia, I sent you.
Yes, I got that.
The, it took quite a bit of research and understanding how to actually do this. And part of it is I've never done it before, so that's why I created the change control document. Um, so the draft amendment, I think we've completed step one is that I've prepared the proposed amendment in the ordinance. And I've introduced it to the legislative body. Um, at the select board meeting and really our first review, so we've got some information back. I will make changes. Um. Jamie, you're gonna let me know on the wildland fires, so if you do that in the next two weeks. Um, the second step then is to set a public hearing date, which we've done before for ordinances, right? During the select board meeting, so properly warned. Um, and have this available for the public.
And we just did this actually with the water department um, ordinance and um. But when I went to looking about how to do it, I couldn't find. The clear instructions, you know, so thank you, Matt.
And there's a whole toolkit on the BLCT's website, but I don't have a login.
Okay, Janet can probably help with that.
I'd like to get with Janet because I think that toolkit would be helpful for us in the future.
There's somebody uh, at BLCT that can help you get signed up to to mention it, cause I don't have it either. But I think, um, you know, I think that it makes sense, this is the first time we hear it. We're gonna do, um, so, so is the second, is the next one a public hearing?
The next one should be a public hearing.
Change, it sounds like it's still made change and you're gonna make some changes we've already discussed.
The first review, um, during. The first review, um, during which amendments may be made. Um. The amendment must then be accepted or rejected by the board.
I mean, my one concern is that since we don't actually have the final.
So I think what we need to do is I need to make the amendments.
And we have another meeting when we accept it.
We talk about it at the next select board meeting. We will accept it.
And then we send the public.
Then we send. I think that's the safest way to do it.
I think it is. I think it is.
Yep.
I think it is.
Okay.
Okay. So that's, that's good.
Sorry, it's so many pages. It took me quite a bit of time to.
No, you did a great job.
And sometimes I get a bit of foxhole of being too specific. So.
It's easy to go down a rabbit hole.
Yes. Yes. So that was our, our first, um, I proposed it to the legislative body and then next meeting will be our first review.
Sounds good. I have one more. Yes, I heard. Um, I could have done this to Cynthia, but I just found all this out this afternoon. Um. I have one of the digital radios that we rent, um. That has some service work that needs to be done. So they're coming Thursday while we do our pump test to do that. But my next question was like to add one more digital radio. To the truck that we put back in service down in West Arlington because it is the first truck going into Sandgate. So it's at the cost of twenty nine dollars a month. Um, so what would happen is we pay yearly so we would have where they would have to. You know.
Three hundred and sixty dollars.
But they would have to.
Pro rate it.
Pro rate it for the rest of this year. So we're gonna see another bill. And I just wanted to make sure it was okay to tell them to bring another radio with them.
Yeah.
The installation should be easy because the truck has already had one in it once before, but when we brought the new truck in.
Did they leave that radio there and just with the radio?
So the way it sounds is the guy is gonna just have to program another radio that we ran off of them. Bring it down. Um. He says that they never rip all the stuff out. So he'd be surprised if they took anything out. He's hoping that he can just come down, plug it in, hook it to the antenna. We're done. But I wanted to, because it was a monthly rental, I didn't want to tell the guy to go ahead because it's well under what I can approve myself, but because it was a monthly. Rental, I wanted to make sure.
I think it's essential that the Sandgate truck had that.
Yep. I think it's a truck. It, it has to have a radio in it, in my opinion. And. The big thing would be just to ask them to co term and pro rate so that we don't have one radio out of cycle or off the billing cycle itself.
All right. I just wanted to know, but no problem. Anything else for the fire department? The only thing that I can think of is the fire agreement for the village camera.
That I think you just need to sign it, this standard thing. I don't.
I just.
Jan, I don't know, Jan, do we need a motion?
Uh, we have.
Brian, have you seen that?
I have not seen anyone.
I think Brian needs to review.
Okay, so let's give.
Review this, but the, uh, it's the standard language, but the operative. Numbers. Pay for services. County of our agrees to pay the village. As compensation for said fire fixing services. Some of sixteen oh eight per year payable in advance on or before the twentieth of February. Twenty twenty six. And B, a thousand forty two eighty one for each non mutually call entered by the company payable within forty five days. Of the day of the town, town is built for her invoice. That's the operative part. But please take this and review it.
Only forty five days. Are we okay with the February twenty eighth date?
I don't see why.
Puts us into next year.
Okay.
Just puts us into next year.
This is the original one with the center paid. So we need this back.
So it's still.
And if there's any changes, we can deal with that.
Yeah. I mean, our emergency contingency line in the budget used to cover the. If there was a call.
Mm hmm.
Um, we did have a problem where we had a wildland fire over there. And they offered to come back the next day and then we got billed for it. Um, like, no, 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 I'm not. At that time it was eight hundred dollars a call. Um, I said, I am not going to pay an extra.
We just.
All right. I just wanted to make sure that that was out there and people were aware. He'll review it and give us our. Feedback.
And Brian, I'll come by Nice. Are you guys gonna be at Nice tomorrow?
Uh, we will be there until six thirty. We're actually gonna head to Sandgate to. Try to see if we can dam up some water and test the new swing down dry hydrant.
Okay, so. What time do you, I wanna come and look for that Comcast equipment.
I'll be there at, uh. Be probably around five. You just wanna get the drill there. I can be there earlier. I can.
Well, no, no, no. What time is it? And the drill starts at like six?
Six thirty.
Six thirty, but you're leaving there. So what I'll do is I'll come at six.
Okay.
To see if the Comcast equipment is there. And then if it's not, and then you can go to west, I'll follow you and somebody can just let me into west.
That works.
Because if you're going to Sandgate, you're going by west.
You're going.
Perfect. Okay.
Welcome to dam up some water and see what we can do.
Okay. I don't know if I'll come out and hang out with you while you're doing that. It depends, but, um. I will at least look for the Comcast equipment. I'll put that in my notes. It's PM. Okay. Janet, I'm gonna hunt down that Comcast stuff.
All right. Under new business, we have, uh, planning commission and ZBA, or I'm sorry. Yeah, planning commission, ZBA alternate appointments.
Um, this is not essential that we handle it right now, but this is the idea of appointing all the select board members as alternates. With ZBA, um, which has been a particular problem, but even the planning commission and appointing myself as an au- as a, as an. Alternate for both of them. We don't have to do it right now, um, but it was something that was discussed when. The, uh, chair of the planning commission was here before. So.
It was alternate previously for both of those.
Whole board.
Yeah.
In past various times. So.
So. I think it needs to be handled in a couple of different motions rather than one collective.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm thinking we talk, think about that and do it at the next meeting because. One of the temptations, now I can't even say it's temptation. One of the things that happened when we were all alternates. Is. It actually, I think, had a downward effect on forums.
Because, oh, we get.
Girls will do it or all.
Yeah. Yeah.
Jamie will do it.
Yeah.
Well, I think it would be, I think it would be appropriate to authorize me.
Couple.
To be an alternate.
Yeah.
Right now. Because the last thing we wanna do is have another ZBA meeting that doesn't happen. So.
We have.
So I think. I think it, I think it needs to be.
We have to balance that with the public's expediency in their.
Yep.
Right.
Requests.
And also the other thing is if you notify all the flatboard members for every meeting.
Oh, my God.
But, but they're not called. They quickly get it so they don't even look at it.
Right.
And so it really almost has to be like if Joan thinks she's not gonna have a quorum, she needs to start calling flatboard members. And specific people need to know that they have to show up.
Yes.
Not that everybody might be, I mean, so there has to be. So, so if, if you guys wanna just appoint me as an alternate to go over tonight, that at least gives something. And then we can discuss this further because I think Dan raised a good point and I know from the past. That just getting all of the emails and.
Yeah, all of that extra noise would just cause us to not.
I mean, and if she almost needs to rotate this meeting, if I need somebody to call.
Like calling a substitute teacher, right? Like.
Yeah.
And if somebody was sidelined or more of the.
Right.
Being on the commissioner of the ZBA, is that a well planned issue?
Right.
I also think, you know, there's a certain. Uh, let's say for instance, hypothetically, I was called as the alternate to one of those meetings. I don't know as though. Like. I couldn't do it at the spur of the moment because I would have to be educated about the content of the meeting before I got there. I would think.
I mean, ideally.
It's not as bad as you think.
Well, I, but ideally the, the, the chair should have a sense of, okay, so and so is out of town, so and so is sick. So I need to, and then somebody would have a chance to review the case or whatever.
I need to review the documents and everything.
But this is where I think we need to have further conversations with the chairs and with Joan so that it's more targeted in terms of. Who, instead of the whole board. Um, I, I don't know. You know, I don't know.
I, I would narrow it down a little bit, just for that reason.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, I think.
In practice, in theory, it sounds great.
Right.
In practice, it doesn't work sometimes.
So we need to discuss it.
Agreed. I would make a motion to appoint town administrator Cynthia Browning as an alternate for the planning commission and. The zoning boarding. Is it ZBA?
ZBA, zoning board adjustment.
Adjustment.
Second. Motion made by Matt, the second by Glenn to appoint, uh, town administrator Browning. As the alternate for the, uh, eight Arlington planning commission and the zoning board of adjustment. And have further discussions on if and when we wanna appoint additional alternates. All those in favor, signal five by saying that.
All right.
All right. We have both. Right. Arlington Energy Committee is pointing this.
Yes, and so, um, I've had some back and forth about this situation and the governing documents. And I'm not quite ready to go forward with this, so I'd like to defer this to the next meeting.
Correct.
I am gonna meet with Nick on Friday and get it sorted out and make sure I'm doing, I'm recommending the correct thing to the board. I don't wanna recommend something that's not correct.
Okay.
Um, the largest legislature appointment, that's what we have to discuss in executive session. For the zoning enforcement, I can inform the board that, um. I have referred the situation where the pavilion was built on River Road to the lawyer. Joe Nash assembled the file. I reviewed the file and I referred it to the lawyer for enforcement. And, um, I will be picking up the junk ordinance enforcement, um, as soon as I can, but that first egregious situation has gone to the lawyer.
Okay.
Um, then the, the, the last thing that we have there is the, um, fund management. But before we get to that, I just wanna mention that. Our animal control officer, Bob Perry, who, from everything I know, he's a great guy and he does a great job. But there have been problems in that his mail, his boarding mailbox is full and people are trying to get a hold of him when an incident in town. And they couldn't leave messages. They couldn't get a hold of him. So, um, that may have cleared up by now. I'm gonna talk to Susan tomorrow. But, um, if this continues, I would like to write a letter to him because I can't call him.
Right.
Um, write, write a letter to him informing him that he has to be available. Uh, and so, you know, it has to be possible for people to send messages or, or, you know, to leave messages or whatever because you can't do a job if that's not true.
Right.
Um, and as I say, from all my contact with him, everything I know, I think he's a great guy and he's done a great job, but people have to be able to.
They have to be able to.
Yeah. Otherwise, you can't do a job. So I just wanted to let the board know about that. Um. Before I did anything.
Okay. Do you wanna do the, uh?
I would do the funds.
And stuff.
And also the fund, the fund management.
Okay.
I've left, I sent something by email and I left a revised version. Um. Here, here's one of them. I left it for each of you. Here's one of that, um. Well, here it is. Anyway, she just revived what she would recommend in terms of the CDs. Um, and because, and she wants to know before she does the CDs, she wants to know if. Um, you know, about what our plans are for spending in the coming year, which of course we don't really know yet. Um, so it might be safest to just do, um. You know, to do a six month CD and then. By that time we know what we're usually doing. And we don't have to decide this tonight. Um, you know, there's no emergency, but, but I want, yeah, we can review it and come back to it, but you have. Her, um, what she had to say about the, the fund security and then.
From Christian.
This is from Christian. Yeah, that's some, that's.
Here's what other towns do. Actually.
So we can.
I'd like to do a little research on this.
Okay, so, um, we'll put this, this will be on our future agenda though.
Next week.
Next week.
Yeah, to your point, it's not. Whether we do it here or two weeks.
No, but, but she, but, but.
It's a good call out.
It's, it's been, it's been a while since you guys first raised this and I wanted to, you know, and she did get back to me and I wanted to present you with that information. And, um, but I think that if we, and we need to be, really respect her ability to safely manage funds, but I certainly don't wanna leave interest money on the table.
And I think, um, you know, the security of accounts is a great call out because I know we have community members that had raised that.
Yeah.
In the past, and I think for public record to just. Acknowledge the security of our accounts, that each account is FDIC insured up to two hundred and fifty thousand. And our town and school district accounts have collateral, uh. Collateral pledge agreements with the Bank of Bennington, who is our financial institution. Uh, and that pledge provides, uh. Provides a pledge of securities as collateral for any balances in our account which exceed the amount of the FDIC coverage. So, uh, that basically means excess deposits are secured by the pledge of securities as collateral. The securities are traded by the Bank of Bennington through Raymond James Investments and the town accounts are not at risk. So I think that's an important call out because I know that that's been raised by.
Yes.
Other community members before and asked why we hadn't.
Now, now we have an answer to that.
Yes.
Right, and we can refer people, you know, we have this stuff.
Yep. Okay. Uh, let's do the warrants and then we'll do our executive session. Here's the waters.
All right, we're on the warrants. And.
Did you get?
Let's see. Water department check warrant WD nineteen. The total amount of eight thousand two hundred and fifty three dollars and ninety three cents. Uh.
Two hundred.
Fifty three. Ninety three cents. Uh, Blue Cross and Blue Shield, Green Mountain Power. And, uh, Snow Plumbing and Heating as backup operator charge in there were the most significant items. I'll make a motion to approve check warrant report WD nineteen, eight thousand two hundred and fifty three dollars and ninety three cents.
Seconds. Motion to approve by Matt. I'll check on report number nineteen and the total amount of eight thousand two hundred and fifty three dollars and ninety three cents. Seconded by Glenn. All of them in favor? Simon, Heather, say on.
Aye.
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 That's some parents.
All right, and then that brings us to, uh. Town of Arlington check warrant report number eighteen. In the amount of forty six thousand one hundred forty four dollars and sixty four cents. Uh, let's see, Blue Cross and Blue Shield. Capital Tractor, um. Think we bought tax envelopes. So gravel. Huge. BLCT, uh, payment as well in there on twelve thousand six seventy three were our significant items. Um. So legal fees in there, a hundred thousand dollars. So. I'll make a motion to approve town of Arlington check warrant report number eighteen, forty six thousand one hundred forty four dollars and sixty four cents.
Second.
Motion made by Matt and seconded by Jamie to approve check warrant report number eighteen. The total amount of forty six thousand one hundred forty four dollars and sixty four cents. All those in favor, say on.
Aye.
We have both. Motion carries.
Dan, Brian has some of your session if you want to go ahead and do that. Cause it just needs.
I'm just telling you.
Um, but did you want the, did you want?
Oh, order.
I didn't know if you wanted to do the motion or, or not.
Do you wanna discuss?
I'll table it. I'd like to table it.
I'll say again.
That's fine.
They'll do it at the next meeting.
Do you wanna copy of this?
I would like.
I'd like a copy too.
Okay.
Yeah, just distribute it to everybody and then we'll just pick up the next one.
And everything. There's no time limit on that.
Not until February.
That's on February. So, yeah, I think it would be worth all of us reviewing.
That's only time. Just try not, you know, get stuff done.
Okay, so we need to, uh.
Do we want to do town administrator report real quick?
I don't even, I mean, we've practically gone through a lot.
I think we did and I read it.
But it's the first time that I've given you a written report because I usually am. Yeah, I'm just, I'm not gonna get that far.
I know.
But you might wanna take a look at, just think if there's something that strikes you. I feel as if at some point I think I need to meet, I hate to say this, Matt, but I think I need to meet with you just to review. Certain things about how, which I mentioned in the report in terms of how I'm prioritizing things and how I'm managing my time. Um, because I think sometimes I get pulled off into doing things first that should come later.
I can definitely help you with that.
I'm sure you can, but we don't have to set a time now. It's just, um.
I need to come in because I need to sit down and get Nick's name off of that. So maybe we can. And I need to come in because I need to sit down and get Nick's name off of that, so maybe we can kind of bump the bundle that stuff together. I just try to pick one thing every two weeks, and so it was the ordinance the last two weeks.
No, this is a huge, this is a hu- what you did was a huge thing, and there's no big rush, I just, um. I just feel that I could be more focused in task management than I have been doing.
Absolutely.
When you change that, are you changing it to?
Town administrator. Or Arlington Town Administrator, I'll think about that. And the other thing is, well, Cynthia has her email, which we will maintain. I'm also going to create a sub-email account that's just, um, like town administrator at Arlington, Vermont. So that we can also just advertise that as an email address that is. General, while you reply back. That way, personnel changes, we can put that on the website.
Right.
Speaking of the website, that is also something that's on my tickler. Um, and I did start to build an RFP for the website to be able to send out, um. To get that refreshed, ours doesn't meet ADA complacency, there's a number of things that need to be done on that. And I think that we wanna make sure that we build one that's super easy. So that to update, so that in the building. You know, um. Just kind of thinking ahead that it would be great to have an, a two-week running calendar, so the community could see what. The highway department is doing, and then, you know, we could even put a section on the site that a lot. Provides, uh, method for secure login. For like members of the fire department, so that they could see their meeting minutes and their calendars behind it. So it will take some careful thought process around that. Um, but that's on my list before the end of the year to be able to get that RFP out.
And a, and a connecting thing is that. Not all the ordinances that are posted on the website are outdated, and, and Rob- I met with Robin. And, you know, I can't find things, I mean, it just like, so there's like a whole bunch of just. Housekeeping, that needs to be done even before, in, in a, in, in, in conjunction with.
Well, so you have to get all of that ready to go, so that we can put it in a new site, make it nice.
So that's something, and I wanna get, I wanna get the digital file, the website, the digital files and the paper files. All coordinated, like I made a big point when we did the water ordinance, that. A scan-in version of the signed ordinance is in the computer and a paper version is in the water department files, and so. So that we're, you know, everything synced up, and I think that's, cuz what, whatever's happening in the future, it's really important that those records.
I think it's important that we keep paper records and that the digital ones we make sure get to OneDrive and are stored out in the cloud.
Yeah.
So. Um, and then that'll make it easy when it comes to a new site, because it can pull automatically from OneDrive.
I know there, I know there are web services out there that are simple to use, as simple as Word. To have a department head update or a close update. This file or administ to something, it's, it's not a big deal.
And the town of Manchester has a good website, there is, is kind of doing that same thing, and, you know, there's WordPress and. A number of them that we don't have, the goal is to be able to update it. Without having to hire somebody to update it. Right, well, that's. Um, but yes, Cynthia, I will add. My next two-week priority will be the name on there.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm, the meeting with you is not a priority, I'm just mentioning it. And I will try to work to get ready for that meeting so that it can be productive.
Think I can dig out a book for you too.
Even better.
Alright, are we on to executive session now?
I think so, and it's, uh, going through session for to discuss. Personnel matter.
So I'll make a motion that a premature discussion of a personnel matter would cause the municipality to suffer substantial disadvantage.
Second.
Motion made by Matt and seconded by Jamie to, uh. Establish the reasons for the executive session as a personnel matter, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. And I'll make a motion to enter into executive session for said personnel matter. And to allow town administrator Browning to remain in the room.
Okay.
Motion made by Matt and seconded by Glenn to enter into executive session to discuss the personnel matter and allow. Town administrator Browning to remain in the room. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And can we just note for Janet any action in the time?
Janet, you can, you're free to go, I'll give you the notes as to the time and the actions. And for Jeanette or anybody else, um, I, I wouldn't imagine the session will be that long, but, you know, who knows?
Probably not, we can just probably pause it just like. Now we're good. Try to get it.
We are, it is nine twenty-seven, and we're back in regular session.
Um, I will make a motion to appoint Karen Prulikowski. To the board of the select board as. Our appointment until. Time auction, so March.
Town meeting. Third second.
I second that motion.
Motion made by Matt and seconded by Jamie to appoint Karen Prulikowski to the select board. For the remainder of Cynthia's term until town meeting, which time anyone who wishes to run can. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion, Karen. There any other business to be brought before the board?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn by Jamie, seconded by Matt. Thank you.
Thank you, thanks, guys.